She's here for Steve.
That's right.
It's on Steve's personal tab.
I'd like to call the August 11th, 2020, Coleson City School Board meeting to order. First item on the agenda is presentation, and first presentation is reopening of schools options with Tilla and Dr. Fox. Mr. Tilla?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be together again. Last time we were together in a four-hour work session where we explored the plan we're going to talk about briefly tonight in great detail. And so we're going to just dive right in. I know this is something that's on the mind of every person in Pecosin and also on the minds of people all over the country and the world is how school will look in the fall. We, so where are we in Pecosin City Schools? This is just a very brief update as an appendage of the 100-slide presentation that we made in your work session and have also made available to our stakeholders on our website and also the Family Choice Option learning document that's available there and have gotten quite a bit of feedback. And as you know, part of the goal for us as a steering committee and our task force is to collect as much feedback and information from our community as possible in making this extremely important but also difficult and challenging decision about how school will start in September. We've gathered hundreds of messages from our public. As you know, we have Let's Talk where our community engages myself and our staff with really meaningful conversation about what school is about and what their folks' opinions are about school and learning. And we've learned a lot from that dialogue, and we've collected all that information, and that's certainly a part of this plan. We've also collected, as you know, tonight, public comment from our community, and I think there's 90-some public comments that you all have had the opportunity to review and study as you begin the task tonight to make these decisions. This is just a quick recap. This is not news to anyone who's looked at our documents and our plan, but we're proposing a two-option plan that allows each family to choose from a continuum of learning, which is option one, that allows the staff and educational community to toggle back and forth in this continuum as needed based on our current situation, considering all the health concerns at the time, considering possible orders from government officials. It allows Pecosin the flexibility to move up and down that option, those options continually throughout the semester and the year if needed. I won't get into the great details of this because, again, it's been available for folks to review for some time now, but it, this is a simple example of how we would transition to a more traditional learning environment. And as you know, I've said it many times, and I've said it at every setting that I've been in in the last several weeks as asked around the community, our goal collectively is to get all kids in school every day. We believe strongly that school is the healthiest place for kids to be. We know they are developed socially and emotionally in addition to meeting their academic needs and helping to build their futures. So we are committed to this, and it's something we talk about every day, all day long. I was sharing with Chairman Carter just a few minutes ago. I have to take this time to thank, deeply thank, the hardest-working group of educational professionals I've ever worked with, and I've worked with some great folks. We are a small but mighty group of educators in this community that care deeply about kids and learning and work tirelessly, from Dr. Fox, Assistant Superintendent, through all the directors. Our principals are second to none, and I can tell you, they have spent countless hours in sweat and tears building these options and plans, turned it over inside and out every way possible to try to find the very best way to get kids in class as soon as possible. That's our goal. We also are very sensitive to the fact that we have to do this safely, and we've pored through thousands of documents provided by the Virginia Department of Education, the Virginia Department of Health, the CDC, the Association of Pediatrics Physicians, and many other organizations to provide guidance as we built this plan. This is quickly, and I won't bore you with the details because, again, you've seen it and reviewed it in great detail, Phase One, where we were on March 5th, Friday the 13th, when schools were closed, and Pecosin, along with other schools around the country, had to build emergency plans for how we would educate kids remotely. And again, my hat's off, I've said this to lots of folks since I've been here, coming from a school district that has been one-to-one with computer accessibility for all children for seven or eight years. For Pecosin to be able to make that happen in an emergency situation as efficiently as they did is nothing short of miraculous. So hats off again to the hard work of this very dedicated group of educational professionals. Then we went into Phase Two, where we ended in June, where we could do certain things, and I want to make special attention, and this will become more important later, about what this particular phase allows for. And again, we're in Phase Three, but when we were in Phase Two, it allowed for limited in-person instruction with pre-K to three and our English language learners, and added to that group is kids with, students with special needs, which in many cases are our most vulnerable population. Then we went into Phase Three, and Phase Three opened the doors for opportunity for school to start in session, and that's the phase we're in now. With the disclaimer that in Hampton Roads, we dropped back to what I'm calling 2.5. I think the governor calls it hybrid, as a phase where we're concerned more limiting the number in gathering and with COVID cases around us. And we'll hear a little more in a few minutes from representative from the Peninsula Health Department. So that's Fa, I mean, Option One, which is a continuum of learning where we can move back and forth based on current data and our current situation that we find ourselves in, and we will be able to move quickly through those stages and, again, with the goal of getting the most kids in our classrooms as quickly as possible but safely. Oh, excuse me. Option Two, which is also a very exciting option, is what we're affectionately calling Pecosin Online. It's a fully virtual model where families can choose this model to stay for a semester or if they're happy with that delivery can continue right on throughout the year. It's very possible that this would be a delivery option for students in years to come, long after COVID is behind us. It's also an option that we would be able to use in an emergency, like a hurricane, where students would not lose instructional time when they're not in the building but could quickly transition to online learning during a time that they're, that we can't bring them in safely in school. This is not to be confused with the emergency model that we all experienced in the spring, which was, again, a valiant effort and great success was found there, but what we're talking about is a much more robust delivery of remote learning where students and teachers are in a more engaging model, more interactive, more face time with the teacher and student, more remedial opportunities on the individual basis. It's a virtual-on-steroids model that we're promoting. We're in the throes now of building that. My dad used to say, Artie, you shouldn't try to build the boat, paint it, and sail it all in the same day. And I've been accused of doing that before. I like to get things done quickly and efficiently, and so we are in the process of building a model that I think we'll all be proud of that we're calling Pecosin Online. Part of that model, and this is, these next few slides are some clarification about questions that came from questions, and you've seen some of those in the feedback you've received that we wanted to make sure folks understood, and we update this on a regular basis on our Frequently Asked Questions page located on the PCPS website. I encourage people to look there often because that changes daily as we get a group of questions. We add them, we find the answers, and add them on the page so folks can explore that anytime. And these are just some examples of questions we've had from our families about the continuum of learning, for example. When students are learning virtually in Option One, they'll follow the exact same schedule as the students who are in Pecosin Online. So they'll have daily schedules, daily interaction with their teacher in the same way that our students who do that every day will have in Pecosin Online. It's a question that has come up quite often, and we'll, again, continue to provide that detail. We're going to launch a campaign, so to speak, beginning as soon as the end of the week with detail about what Pecosin Online will look like with video and examples of what high-quality remote learning looks like. Also, we, in the Family Choice Option, the document that's available on our website, there's details about this, and we'll get into it briefly today, about how a family would register for that and be plugged in to start on September the 8th. In Option Two, the virtual learning, we've had a lot of questions about athletics, and you know, you've seen, and it's posted on our website, the Virginia League has accepted what we call Model Three, where the sports season has been delayed and will start on the 14th of December. Well, our students in virtual learning will have the same access to athletics and other extracurricular activities as our students in Option One. So that question has come up often. Can a kid run track, for example, while they're in Pecosin Online even though they're concerned about being in a more traditional environment at school? And the answer is yes, they can. Other clarification questions? A lot of people have asked, how will you deliver virtual learning? And the answer is, or one of the answers, is a new and exciting tool, at least new and exciting for Pecosin and many divisions in Virginia, called Canvas. Canvas is a learning management system that allows our teachers and students to engage learning together in a interactive, real-time model with a lot of tools and resources embedded in that program. We've used platforms or opportunities like Google and others that have done very well for us, but this is a step above in the ability for our students and teachers to engage learning together in a very effective way. Now, our staff will be learning this as we go. We're sending out modules for staff to start that process, and of course, our before-school day, pre-service training will be heavily weighted in how to use effectively Canvas to liver, to deliver high-quality instruction. We also have training modules for students and parents, so parents will have the same access to be able to watch what's going on in their students' classes, as well our administrators will have access to these classrooms so they can provide support and coaching and quality control as we unveil and deliver this high-quality instruction. A lot of questions around students with special needs, and we're going to involve the students with special needs early in this process. Those kids are part of the first group that will come into school will be our students with special needs. The, their individual plans will be reviewed and updated, so we are able to provide, meet all of their needs through both models, whether the family chooses the fully virtual model of Pecosin Online or our hybrid model that will have a mix of in-person and virtual. Also, our gifted students. I mean, I don't want to miss this. If there is a question while we're live that any family has about students with special needs, their child, and specific questions about their child, please contact the school, and we'll provide those answers for you immediately. I know that is a concern, and we've heard some of that feedback throughout the process. Gifted services, our tag kids, all of our kids that qualify for gifted services, those will continue in both Option One and Option Two, both delivery models. Health and safety information. We, like every division in the state of Virginia, are required to submit a health, a division health plan that's very comprehensive. It's, answers every possible question you could come up with about what happens, what your district is planning to do to keep kids safe while on campus. And our plan is, in the final stages, we'll be ready to hit send, and I want to thank Ashley Reyer for her hard work in leading that as our Student Services Director, in leading that campaign for us. She's worked tirelessly in helping to build this plan, and in looking at these plans from around the state, I would put ours up against anybody's. As well, we will be publishing by the end of the week a summary of that plan. You won't want to read the whole thing unless you're extremely bored, that will have all the details that you'll need to know about how we're going to keep kids safe on our campuses, including cleaning measures, pre-screenings for students before they arrive on campus, what happens if there's a case. All of these questions are answered in our health plan, and I would encourage folks to review that or the summary of it that'll be available at the end of the week. This next section is just a quick update from information we shared at our work session a couple of weeks ago, as well, that is in our comprehensive plan that's been published. But the data is changing every day, so this is just a snapshot. I want to draw your attention to a couple of things so that everyone understands we're watching this constantly to make sure that we're making the best decision possible for our kids and families. You'll notice that the numbers have changed. We have 44 cases of COVID in Pecosin, which represents a 389% increase over, just over a month ago, July 7th. And the Peninsula cases have jumped over a point in the percent positive as well, from 6.4 to 7.7. And Hampton Health District is, has some pretty alarming numbers there that we have to be conscious of. And the rate of cases per 100,000, and you'll hear more about this from the representatives from the Health Department in just a few minutes, but we've been told that that's probably the best measure to watch because it puts it in perspective based on the size of your community, and I won't read them to you, but these are our numbers, and again, that is updated in our presentation and available on the website. Staffing information, and I don't want to belabor the point, but we've talked about from the beginning, the key to our plan working is we have to have teachers and our staff available to do this work because, as with every division, that's necessary, but in Pecosin with our size, one teacher out, two teachers out, it's, we don't have a way to overcome that. We don't have extra teachers in the pipeline, and we can't just adjust for that. We are very lean in how we staff. This is an important slide as we look at staffing because you'll notice that over 50% of our staff live outside of Pecosin, and I won't belabor that point, we looked at it before, and I will make note also that we contract our custodial services and our food services with private companies, and those employees who are not directly our employees, most of them live outside of Pecosin as well, and they do have direct contact with our students and teachers. We also surveyed our substitutes, and substitutes are worth their weight in gold everywhere, but certainly true in Pecosin, and we had 63 substitutes that we ended the year with last school year, and you'll notice that from this recent survey with our substitutes, 38% of them are unavailable or unsure about returning to school, and that leaves us 29 that are committed to returning, which is a significant decrease in what we need to function on a regular basis. Now, we're continuing the recruiting process. I hope you understand that we are constantly recruiting substitutes and bus drivers as well as our instructional staff. People are the key to this business. Our ability to open for in-person instruction is contingent on us having all of our staff members here. And a couple of quick points. We, as you know, shared with our staff recently that there are leave programs where if you qualify in certain circumstances, you may have some extended leave options. We have, in our recent information that ended as of 5:00 yesterday, we have, we heard from 13 of our employees that we believe qualify for extended leave options, and 11 of whom are teachers. In addition to that, we already have a math position that we've been advertising for over a month now, actually significantly over a month now, as well as a special ed position and a pre-K teacher at Pecosin Elementary, and we just lost a bus driver week before last, I believe, two weeks ago. So these are valuable folks, and we, we need everybody, everybody in place to, to open So here's a little bit of additional information, just, just so you get a flavor of the parameters that we're working in and the challenges we're overcoming. As you know, from our workshop, physical distancing requirements significantly reduce the capacity for us to transport students on a bus. The best way to think about it, and you all saw models, and it's in our plan, what our large buses can contain and what our smaller buses can hold with these requirements, and it's roughly half. So these are some things that we have to be ready for, is adjusting some of the expectations that have been in place before. Pecosin families are used to transportation that allows a lot of flexibility, and we love that and hope to be able to continue that in the future, but with these restrictions, transporting a larger number of kids when we get to that place might require that we have limited accessibility to transportation and delivery sites. So we won't be able to pick you up at multiple sites and deliver you on a regular basis to multiple sites like we've been doing, maybe limiting to one drop-off location and one pickup location, which can be different from morning to afternoon. And there'll have to be a consistent pattern for the Monday, Thursday, and Tuesday, Thursday delivery in the hybrid model. So these are just some parameters, some contingencies that we are going to have to have some support and partnership with our families in order to make this work to get students back in with the social distancing restrictions. I think it's important in this place to say that when people ask me, why can't we have every kid in school every day? The short answer is six feet. I don't know any other way to say it. The requirements for social distancing, and you'll look around the room, we've exercised that tonight, and should be exercising it everywhere, six-feet distance is, is the expectation. Now, there's lots of nuances and practices that can mitigate that. Mask wearing can mitigate that distance for a short period of time, and we're following all of that, and our plan in great detail contains all of those contingencies. But it's important to know that, for example, on a bus, to accommodate this, we're going to have to require students to wear masks while on the bus because they will break that six-foot distance in that period of time. And that's been approved, and that's something we can do, but that is for a temporary period of time when, when that six-foot distance is, is broken. That would include in a classroom and when a teacher comes to help a student with a particular question or a problem, those masks will be necessary in, in that environment. So these are just contingencies, pieces of this plan without, again, getting in great In addition, we should expect that there be some possible delays and schedule alterations as we look at sanitizing our buses. I think we have it down, Steve, to about 12 minutes to completely sanitize a bus, but before we put, we drop off one group of children, we'll have to sanitize in order to pick up the next group of children. So there may be some possible delays in that process. And again, without getting in the weeds with this with great detail, these are things that our families will, will have to know, and we'll certainly communicate as we move through that continuum to get more kids in school more often. Also in our survey, and we talked about this as well in great detail, I think 71% of our parents indicated that they would be willing to at least transport their child in one direction to or from school, and in some cases, both ways. That helps mitigate this as well. The more families that are willing to partner with us on that, the more students we can, can safely get on the bus for the needed transportation. This is a reality. I was reading in an article just this morning that a school south of here quarantined 800 students after being in school for a short period of time. That's just a reality. That our plan allows for that. It allows us to move back and forth on that continuum as need be, as health necessitates that. If we have to move back, hope we don't, hope we don't ever have to deal with this, but if we do, we can do that, and we can do it relatively quickly. The bold there is the important piece. We've been told time and time again, and it's very much a part of our health plan, that in these cases, they're going to be decided on an individual basis based on all the information at the time, if there's a suspected case or a known case, and we're going to default to the guidance and leading of the Peninsula Health Department and the Virginia Department of Health. They're the health experts, and in some cases, they may actually require a school closure And in some cases, they may actually require a school closure or a classroom closure. So we're going to default to their expertise and that is part of our plan, but we should expect that that could actually happen. One thing I want to make clear, we are going, we are committed to the continuity of instruction during that. Just like the example I gave earlier, in the event we have a hurricane and we default to remote or virtual learning, we will be able to do that in the event we have to go back in our continuum. We make progress, we get more kids in class and then for an outbreak or whatever, we are forced to go back in the continuum, then we would be able to do that and continue our learning by immediately toggling to virtual instruction and our teachers will be good at that. The blended, blended learning model will allow us to move back and forth between virtual and, and in-person face-to-face instruction. Canvas also, I don't want to oversell Canvas. I don't work for them. But it is a great tool. We've used it in my previous district for many years. Although we had to pay for it, Virginia has bought this for all 138 school divisions and it's something I'm personally very grateful for because I've watched it, I've worked with this tool for many years and it's a very effective way to deliver high-quality instruction. So Canvas is one of those ways we, it will allow our teachers to continue this continuity of learning as we toggle possibly back and forth across that learning continuum. Now I'm going to call Dr. Fox to come up and talk about some details about the next steps. And this is just a few short slides. I promised I would be brief and I lied. I apologize. But she's going to go through the details of what will start immediately tomorrow morning in this process after your plan approval.
Thank you, Mr. Tillot. This is a new process for everybody, so we wanted to, just since we know we probably have a lot of people watching this evening or streaming, we want to make sure we begin the conversation because it is such a new process for everybody. But in order to select either option one or option two, we're going to run this process through our parent portal, through Power School. So, beginning tomorrow morning, we will email out, we'll push out through Blackboard 5 Connect calls, through our website, through our social media accounts, we'll push out all of those instructions on how to do that. They will be very detailed for parents because again, this is the first time that they'll be doing this. And we do have staff available if there are questions. Over the past week and a half, we've been pushing out messages and letters to families who have not activated their parent portal account. So if you're one of those parents and you haven't, we're going to need you to activate that account to be able to move through this process for us. And when you are in there doing it, you'll see that there's a family choice option where you'll select either option one or option two. And then it'll move you through a process where we're asking you to update all of your current information for that student. So anything that needs to be updated, whether it's email addresses or phone numbers, you'll do that in one continuous process for the students. And you will repeat this process for each student because you're going to make a, a selection for each student, not just as a family. So, if you want student one to have option one and student two to have option two, you have that choice as a family for that process. Students do not have access to the parent portal, so this is a parent piece that we need parents to take care of for us. And like I said before, we will have specific staff available for any questions that parents might have. And again, we'll share a plethora of information tomorrow on how this process will unfold and all of the steps needed to make it happen. And I believe, I'm going to turn it back over to you.
And I want to thank Dr. Romaine for being here tonight, representing the Peninsula Health District. She's going to share a few slides about our current situation in Pecosin and around Pecosin related to COVID cases. So, Dr. Romaine, appreciate you being here.
Take my mask off so that people can hear me a little bit better, but thank you, Mr. Tillot, for inviting us to come and speak tonight. So yeah, I'm Dr. Romaine. I've got my colleague Tess here with me to help answer any questions that anyone might have following. So, just starting with what some of the considerations are for public health and what our aim is, and that would be, as listed here, to decrease access morbidity and mortality. And some of the things that need to be considered in that would be the special populations that might be at most vulnerable, at most risk, such as ones with comorbidities, which could specifically be in some of those students requiring special needs and, and education. The cost and capacity of healthcare systems to handle the public health crisis that we're in. Also, the availability of public services as well as the cost of that. And then also considering the cost or risk benefit analysis of mass gatherings such as being in a school setting. Busy slide, basically the, the two key parts are highlighted there that would most pertain to school systems. Oh, I'm sorry. It sounded like I was getting picked up, but I apologize. So, the first one decreases in newly identified cases. So obviously we want overall the number of new cases to be dropping. And then a decrease in the percent of positive tests, so we need more tests and less to be positive. So basically, here's the key takeaways. We need to lower transmission as much as possible and get a rapid turnaround and have a lot of testing available. And this is a snapshot of where we are and I don't know if I have a pointer, but I hope most people know where we're located in Virginia. And you can see that we're in that bright red section, which means we have substantial transmission. And then the red section also has a little dot, which means that we're steady. We're not decreasing, we're at a steady rate of substantial transmission. And then this is also just showing the, the case rates since the beginning, back, starting in about April of the case rates for the different localities. And you can see that, you know, compared to the others, Pecosin is lower. However, as mentioned before, we do have a lot of people that travel in and out of Pecosin, so you can't just focus on the numbers for Pecosin. Case positivity is our indicator of adequate access and testing volume. For the World Health Organization, they would like it to be less than 5%. Virginia has less than 10%. While that may seem a little stringent, it's obviously a little more relaxed than the World Health Organization or the CDC, which wants it as low as possible. This slide shows for Pecosin specifically, some of the flags that CDC has, or not actually CDC, that Dr. Peak at Virginia Department of Health has put in place with the burden of 5 and 10%. And we're at 5.9. PCR percent positivity is at 7.7%. The flag is at 10% or more. And then you can see our trend, we're at, the flag being 14 days, we're at 10. And with the percent positivity for PCR, we're at 14 days, which is right at the flag. But again, just showing the trends here, a little busy slide. This is a snapshot, well, not really a snapshot, but the trends for Peninsula, the whole region of Peninsula, so all the, the other localities as well. And just how it's been trending since back in, in March when all of this started. The, you know, the yellow line obviously started out really high, but that's when we were testing a very small portion of people who had a very high likelihood of being positive. So, that's why you, you know, would see the drop, but then it's risen again even as we've been increasing the testing and that's reflecting that increase in the transmission and the number of cases. So, the snapshot doesn't predict the future infection, just costs of a test are around 150 and the, so for essential personnel, we, that's what this next line applies to. So people who are essential personnel, we need to give them more tests than necessarily the general population because we need them to continue working. They may have come into contact with a case and we need to still have them go to work, so they have to quarantine when they're at home, but they continue to work and they get tested every three days during their whole quarantine period. So that chews up some of those, those tests for some of those essential personnel. And then there, you know, as far as testing, there's the public and the private. We had the state lab that we were primarily using initially before the other labs got up and running. And turnaround time varies. We've also got some at-home testing that is starting as well as some rapid tests. But the rapid tests don't tend to be as predictive or as accurate as the PCRs, which need to be sent to a lab and take more time. So, two primary labs that we use are Quest and LabCorp. And you can see the, the turnaround time can range from two up to 10 days depending on the workload and, and the lab's capacity. And, so this is just giving a little information about what we have as far as testing and where. There's five sites in historic triangle, 12 sites on the southerly Peninsula. And then Richmond has a rapid testing site. I believe that Velocity is putting out a rapid test very soon or has started it. But again, that's going to be looking at antigens versus this PCR. And so that's going to more predict that you were infected, but not necessarily that you were really recently infected. So there's just, it, it may need a confirmatory test after, after that. So that would be an additional cost to, to do that one and then a confirmatory. And then again, the hospital systems are doing this regular testing of patients before they come in. We've also got nursing homes that are routinely testing patients and staff, trying to mitigate this spread. So, risk factors, you know, typically we look at students and consider them to be younger, less risk. However, there are a lot of other people that are around those students who might have higher risks, being a little bit older and having other illnesses as a, as a confounding factor. Here we say typically about 15% to 16% of people live or work outside of the area. Here we obviously earlier heard that it was closer to 50% or at 50% here. So you have to, again, consider all those outlying regions. And then, you know, kids, we have found that, seen that they can be asymptomatic, not having any symptoms, but still carrying and transmitting the vector of COVID-19. And then, you know, status of PPE, it varies. What, you know, everybody's wearing masks now, but that's not always enough. And if you come in contact with somebody who is positive and you're wearing, you know, one of the masks that we all are typically wearing, that's not the, that's not considered appropriate PPE or adequate for being in, in contact with a case patient. So, yeah, so there's also the consideration of funding right now. Obviously, the budgets are being stretched to the limits and so public health is also feeling that. We've, at the, at the district, we've hired additional case investigators and contact tracers to help with the efforts. But we're also looking at the significant downfall in immunizations and the rates of students and children coming in to receive immunizations. And so likely, as before, additional support will need to be hired to promote the immunizations and vaccinations program. And just obviously getting that information out and with, with looking at students, you need to be concerned with that herd immunity, getting all of those students vaccinated so that they're not transmitting other disease within the school and, you know, combating some of those misconceptions about immunizations. Yeah, I think that was, that's an additional slide if necessary, but I think that's all I have. Unless anybody has any questions, Tess and I are available to attempt to answer them.
Thank you, Dr. Romaine. We appreciate your efforts and, and your whole team. All of the work you're doing now is, is heroic.
Actually, I do have a question. I can't. Do you have any stats on survival rates? I mean, everything's death and everybody's getting the virus, but do you have anything on survival?
So, not completely. I mean, we don't, you know, we, we document how many people have died. We document hospitalizations, but we don't have good metrics to say this many people have been released. We're also not doing a test to, to cure or anything like that. Whereas, you know, some people might be retesting until you test negative before you could return to work or someplace. We're not, we don't do that. For one, it, you can remain positive for multiple weeks and so it's not the best measure. We go more with a timeframe-based system. In general, the, in general, you're not going to, we, it's assumed that you're, it's thought that you won't be reinfected within a three-month period. So, you could to some extent extrapolate and look at the numbers that have been positive, look at the number of deaths and kind of deduce that all the other ones have recovered, you know, well. And right now, we're just hitting that three-month period where people could potentially get reinfected. But that's, yeah, in general, we don't, we haven't been tracking hospital discharges of recovered patients.
So, the death rate is what, 2% roughly?
I thought we had that on the slide. Did we have that on the slide, Tess?
But then, Craig, you have to look at it, to me at least, you have to look at death rate versus, to me, I believe it's still highest in Virginia death rate in patients that are, died in skilled nursing facility.
That are, I'm sorry.
That were in a skilled nursing facility versus if you look at kids aged zero to 19, there's still been zero deaths.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at it based on, on age, yes, there is a.
Even overall, you're like 98% survival.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Any else?
Oh, she shuts down, then I'll have, I'll get my question.
Of course you do.
Thank you again. You all have, no doubt, received more information than probably any other, with any other decision you've ever had to make. I would doubt, at least with your service on the board. This is a, this is a heavy decision. I hope it's been ample information. I hope it's been enough for you to make a, a decision that, that you feel good about and that, that you can be comfortable with because what I know about you as a group of, of individuals, just in the short time I've known you, that you care deeply about kids and families in this community. And that's well-known and admirable and much appreciated. With that said, after all of this work and all of the things that we've looked at, the very safest way to start school is fully virtual. And everybody knows that and it's no secret that the folks all around us have made that decision. And it's not one that, that should be not considered. Let me just say that. And we have considered every possible option. And I still believe that's the safest way to, to start school. But with that said, I'm also very aware that kids need to be in school. And it's healthy for kids to be in school. I'm also keenly aware and have gotten a lot of feedback from families that are scared to death about what they're going to do related to childcare for a two-working parent family. And these are things that quite honestly have kept me awake at night and, and the members of my team. And I know it has you. So, with all of that said, I'm prepared to make a recommendation tonight that Pecosin City Schools, first that you adopt our plan. And you'll need to vote on that with a, with a call and a motion from our chairman. And then secondly, that you consider starting on the continuum of learning for those families who choose that with a, what we're calling a partial hybrid model that reflects the guidance that was in place in Phase 2, which I would argue represents kind of the phase that we may be in now in this region, which would allow our stu, us to get quickly, starting on the 8th of September, our most vulnerable academic population. starting on the 8th of September, our most vulnerable academic population, which is our pre-K to grades three, pre-K to three, as well as our students with special needs and our English language learners, the kids who we need to get a jumpstart on immediately to close those gaps and get learning happening at high levels. And then would allow us to, at a full remote option in the continuum for our four and five graders, that we would begin the planning process of safely bringing those kids in school as quickly as possible. And then, look at six, eight. And then, finally, our high schoolers, all as quickly as we can do that safely and mitigating all of these health risks at the same time with all of our cleaning measures and all of our safety mitigation. I think that's our best route right now. So I'm putting that on the table. Of course, the governor has given local school boards the autonomy to make this decision. And I humbly submit that that's my best recommendation at this point. So I'm going to turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate your attention and great diligence in this very important decision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Do you have any public comments?
No, sir. We do not have any public comment.
Not in person, right?
I have printed and given all the board members, all the written submitted comments that I've received over the week, and each of you have that to review, written comments.
And that public comment was given to us as they were, as they were coming in, various documents through email. This is a compilation, it's roughly 50 pages of comments that Ms. Reimers has received and filed for us and bound very nicely, by the way. I had no idea that it was, it was going to be quite that big. I really appreciate all of the feedback. We have all been discussing these. We all had access to these comments, and now we actually have a physical document in our hands. It's a compilation of all the comments that were, that were made. So I really appreciate that from citizens in Pecosin. The next item is consideration of approval of the superintendent's recommendation of reopening school plan for the 2021 school year. This will be a two-part vote. The first part, we will vote for adopting the plan, which is all families have the option of either going all virtual or somewhere on the, I said, option one, option two. So that'll be the first vote. Depending on that vote, then we will vote on the superintendent's suggestion of that hybrid part for option one, starting with the pre-K through grade three and our special needs populations with our English second language students as well, starting in the hybrid. They would be in class part of the week and they would be virtual part. And with that being said, let's take a vote on the plan first. So do I have a motion to approve the plan that all families, either option one or option two, start school?
I'm moved.
And the second?
Second.
Any questions there about that? We have gotten so much information. It has been just thorough. I honestly don't know how so few people gather such good quality information and present it. I mean, it just, it boggles my mind. All machines, I can tell you that, and very efficient. So I really appreciate everyone.
Dr. Carter, if I may?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to make sure that parents at home fully understand that the model for the virtual learning sector is going to be drastically different than the one that occurred in the spring. The measures taken by the staff to ensure that our virtual learners have a more quality education for those that want to elect, starting the first nine weeks in that virtual learning environment. I think it's safe to say that that environment will be gravely different than what it was in the spring, to the point where, you know, even if you had a student struggled with that virtual learning period of their education, I think it'll be a different model and a different platform. And I think the results be maybe not as well-served as being in the classroom, but ones that you'll see the benefits of more of an educational basis and ones for those that may have struggled in the past. I think they'll be more receptive to a learning environment there. And I just wanted to make sure that that's, you know, that peace of mind is out there to our, to our parents because I think that is an important part that needs to be, you know, fully documented.
Ms. Reimers?
Mr. Freeman?
Aye.
Mr. Ingram?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Ms. Hessel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sheeler?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes seven.
Thank you, ma'am. Second part of this vote is going to be to, for the families who opt into option one, which is.
Aye.
September 8th will be a hybrid model for pre-K through three. Our special needs population, our, which, secondly, I have a motion to approve that startup.
Does that move?
Second?
Second.
Questions there?
I think it needs to be made clear, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
To the parents that we have limitations here beyond our control. I didn't know till last week, maybe, or 10 days ago, that the way Richmond has limited us as far as distancing, those very important aspects of what we're dealing with with COVID, they literally limit us. If we wanted to go back full-time tomorrow, it cannot be done unless we start moving walls out, make a larger building. So we're looking at 50%. That is what it is. So when it comes, that's one major limitation we can't control. The second we can't control is we have 13 staff members who are caring for somebody who's sick, apparently, maybe more. I think Mr. Tillit says, you know, we don't know that sure yet, the full number, could be more. That's important stuff. So if we can't get everyone back to teach, then also we can't go forward if we wanted to go full-time tomorrow. First things are just out of our control. I think the parents should know that before we go forward.
Right. And thank you, Ms. Holcomb and Mr. Jordan. I was kind of thinking some of this discussion would come in during the communications part of the meeting, but this is really what parents are interested in, is where's my child going to be? What's going to be happening on September 8th? So some of these comments right here about the plan and the reopening of the school, I think are very appropriate so that parents can hear, public can hear what's going on. To Mr. Tillit's point, I've done this a couple of years, and we've had some hairy situations, but this one has been a complex, cumbersome process because you're getting conflicting information. There's so many moving parts. There are variables. There are state mandates that are coming down, all these extra sanitizing methods, distancing. They're moving furniture out of classrooms. The wear and tear on the heating AC system that we have no idea is going to be able to support the new filters that we have to have in place. Training staff for delivery of online instruction, some of whom have never done this before until last year when they were thrown overboard and said, swim. I mean, that's, that's, that's the analogy right there. Everybody was tossed overboard and said, learn how to swim now. And they did an amazing job, having to scramble to get this together to keep us alive, basically. Okay? So what we've had since then is some time to regroup and start putting people in swimming lessons, ease them into the water, teach them the skills needed and the appropriate way to go about this distance education, which can be very effective. We had, we were in the same situation at the apprentice school. I teach at the apprentice school, among other things, and we were forced to do the same thing. We have seen some very positive aspects of virtual learning. So there are some positives. We were fortunate enough to have a little bit of time to plan. So none of this stuff has been, the state didn't say, here's a chunk of money, go do all these things. And oh, yeah, by the way, we're going to bump up your staff so that you have the manpower to get these things done. None of that came from the state, none of that. It was, here are your mandates, good luck, and we're not even going to tell you how to do it, we're going to leave it to y'all. So everybody is in uncharted territory. So the plan, the comments, putting all this together, the brainstorming sessions that we have had, the work sessions, the four-hour work session, I've never been to a four-hour work session before. I ate a whole thing of Sweet Tarts, like Ms. Hessel. But all of this, we're in uncharted territory. And we have toiled over this, make the best and most effective decision possible to start school on September 8th. And I applaud everybody for your work, for your input. We had some opposite sides of the table, kinds of discussions, and that's fine. It has all been done with mutual respect and appreciation for one another and their, and your input and your perspective on things. So it has been a learning experience, and hopefully, one day, this thing will settle down because I want to see the kids running down the sidewalk into the classrooms and, believe it or not, running down the halls. Okay? Go. I would, I'll take it, have the teachers slowing them down, that's great, let them go. That's what we all want. We all want them back in the classroom with teachers, getting that education, socializing, and maturing in numerous ways, not just mentally. So with that being said, does anybody else have, because we are going to have some communications, and I think I just said mine. Okay.
Just to make sure everyone knows where we're at, the partial is, go over like it's K three, two days a week, and then four or five is virtual or in school?
Virtual.
Virtual. And everybody, so four up is virtual. So just a little.
Temporarily, yes.
Okay.
And on that note, I might jump in the gun again, Mr. Chairman, is it all right or should I wait?
Does it pertain to the?
His comment, yeah. So what we've done, the first question I'll be asked tomorrow is, okay, we're trusting you guys to go, you know, to the right on that option one as soon as possible. And, you know, we don't know you, Ms. Tillit, very well. We trust you. We just got here this year, so we're going to be relying on the administration, and the board has a hand in that. We'll be in, you know, in touch with the superintendent. And with information available, as fast as we can get it from you, Dr. Thank you for coming tonight, and CDC and others, we are trying, Mr. Chairman, to move to the right as soon as possible. We're all in agreement 100% on that. I want the parents to also know that it's important, know that four and five are starting where they are, but we're already starting, we're already trying to lean to the right on that option one to get back there. And in fact, the superintendent today told me he'd like to have that done by the first nine weeks, which is a great lofty goal, but I'm with you, and I hope that that's what happens. But we're leaning right already.
And that, that is everybody's goal, everybody's goal in this room right here, and most everybody's goal, I would say, in the city of Pecosin, is to move as far right as possible, as quickly as possible. I mean, I think that's, that's what we all want. Unfortunately, our circumstances and those mandates that we've been talking about are preventing us from just opening the doors wholesale on September 8th. So that's what we have to deal with. Okay, so Ms. Reimers, would you call for a vote, please?
Mr. Freeman?
Aye.
Mr. Ingram?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Holcomb?
I'd like to wait longer than Craig did, but I'll go ahead and say aye now, so. Think about it a while. Aye.
Mr., Ms. Hessel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sheeler?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes seven.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, well, let's. I'll tell you what, Dr. Parrish picked a good time to leave, I'll tell you. She's waving, going, good luck. Mr. Freeman?
I'd just like to thank everyone for all the hard work, particularly the principals. We saw the schedules and the work sessions. Absolutely incredible work there. That's just, some of the best stuff I've seen. So thank you for all that. And then just thank the community for all the input. Know that we want kids in school yesterday, but we can't do that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Ingram?
Want to thank the steering committee for, you know, coming up with the different options and, you know, all the parameters associated with each one of those. And Mr. Tillit, Dr. Fox, everyone that was involved with the presentation, excellent job. And then just, I think all the administration, principals for helping to figure the best way to get the kids back to school as safe as, and.
So having been a longstanding resident of Pecosin, a graduate of Pecosin, having two kids in the school system now, you know, decisions like this are certainly difficult. It's ones that, you know, so much time and effort went into and gathering the data and trying to make the right decision. I'm fully aware that there's been some dissension in the community regarding this particular topic and issue. There maybe isn't a right way, you know, but we, it was a decision that we had to make on the best behalf of our students. Also, making sure that we take care of our staff as well, because we do have some of the best teachers in Virginia, and we're very fortunate to have a great administration and staff. And we appreciate all the feedback that our staff gave throughout this process as well. I just want our staff members to know that, that the dialogue that we had and the feedback was certainly well-received. And we hope that we can move forward from this decision and, you know, just know that we tried to make a decision that was best on behalf of our students and staff, you know, to proceed and move forward. So, you know, hard to believe that we're now less than a month from the start of school, and we'll continue to, you know, as Mr. Tillit's going to weigh the data, you know, moving forward. And again, that, the key with that continuum is there's decisions that can be made there to move it right or left. So, you know, I look forward to the guidance by Mr. Tillit and his staff, and appreciate all the hard work, everybody. Thanks.
To echo a lot of what we've already heard with the administration mainly, also principals, your staffs, I don't know who all was involved in this, trying to chase the moving target last few weeks, you know, good plan Monday, start again on Tuesday kind of thing. So there's been a lot of effort in this and a lot of patience, and, you know, grounded in a lot of caring about our kids, you know, and a professional attitude about that, just doing what has to be done. So I really want to thank you all for that. You know, I think my job was hard, but not compared to what you all have done. You gave us the best information we could have, the four-hour meeting, I think it was necessary. We kept Mr. Chairman awake through the whole thing, I felt good about that. He was, he was ready. He was hanging in there with his Sweet Tarts. So, but it was a great, it was a great meeting, covered all bases. You couldn't walk out and say you didn't know what was going on, you know, because we did. And I think what we're doing is a bold move, to be honest with you, because I think in the area, I only heard of one exception, that way, yeah, thank you, that's doing anything different. Every other school, I think this side of Shenandoah, is what I've been told, is doing a nine-week virtual, no, no exception, no chance to move anywhere to the right, as we're saying, toward a more hybrid, back in school five days a week. They're not given that any option now at all. When I first heard that plan here, I thought, that just sounds like status quo, we'll be there at Christmas, that nothing's going to change. But we've got a superintendent who's willing to take this data and look at it every week or every day, whatever it takes. But we've got a superintendent who's willing to take this data and look at it every week or every day, whatever it takes, let us know what's going on with a, with a good opportunity and a goal, an aggressive goal, bold goal, maybe get this done by nine weeks. If, that'd be a miracle, you know, but even by Christmas, it'd be, it'd be great. If we have half our kids in school, at least a hybrid plan, which again is, is Richmond limited. So a hybrid plan for our, all of our student body would be, you know, as far as we can go right now with the phase that we're in right now. And that's, I think that's the very plan. So thank you, um, Mr. and Ms. Tillit and the rest of you all for all your hard work, and we're looking forward to good news as we go through the first nine weeks. Hessel?
Um, just wanna thank our community for waiting. Sit back, take a look, look at not only what others were doing, not that we did the same thing. Obviously, we went a little different, but we wanted to have more data available. And I think that, as we know, is the biggest thing right now, is the data. And, you know, we are starting to track down, thank goodness. I completely agree with what everybody else said tonight. Our office has done an amazing job, the teachers, um, you know, all the principals, everything looks wonderful. I felt like I was the one browbeating in the work session, so I completely appreciate everything that has been done. It's great. I'm looking forward to it. The one thing I will say, because I've already had some text messages come through, is to parents that are saying, why are you sending the germyest kids back to school? It's because, just like you said, Mr. Tillit, they are the most vulnerable. So we really do need our community and our families' help. And continuing to teach your kids hand-washing, social, you know, the social. That is all key as we go back, because it's not, it's not if we. That is just, you know, continue reinforcing with them. I just thank you all. I, I stand behind our decision. I think we made a, a good move today, and I respect each of you, so, thanks.
Reiterating what everyone has already said, I would like to say that, uh, I'm, I'm very proud to be a. Respect each of your opinions, and I have learned, being able to talk with you and work through the issues. I know we come from slightly different positions, but we all, uh, care very much about our students and our town. And, uh, I'm just so proud that we can move with this kind of flexibility. This is, I think this is a, a brilliant plan, uh, and so many fine minds went into making it work, so.
Thank you, ma'am. I've said pretty much my piece. I mean, I'm, I'm, I just, uh, right now, I'm, I'm envisioning 33 and a third percent of the town celebrating and 66 and two-thirds of the town going. We're working for the other 66 and two-thirds, I promise. Okay, we're working on it. And we're gonna get you there as quickly as we possibly can. But I do wanna emphasize that the virtual learning piece that is gonna start happening at the beginning of the year is gonna be tremendously different from what you saw at the end of the year. Okay? It is gonna be a night and day difference. So try to reserve judgment on virtual learning until this is rolled out. Everybody kinda gets into their groove and it starts moving, uh, like a bell-oil machine, and, and things will be good. It is, there are some very, there's some huge benefits to virtual learning, okay? There are also classroom. So we're gonna, uh, move to the right as quick as we can. We need to get some t-shirts. Okay, well, thank y'all so very much for your help. Thank you for coming out and doing the presentation for our department as well. And with that, we will adjourn. Y'all have a great night.